Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, March 4th, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Colleagues, the time is now 10:15 and we have eight members present, two shy of a quorum, make that nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we have a number of special presentations and introductions to be made. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Ludlow.
Thank you, Council President. We turned the alarm, the sound down a little bit. Want to make sure everybody's awake Friday morning. It's a real honor for me to be here this morning. I'm joined by a few people who are really making a statement about the potential for the quality of life to shift in many of the areas of Los Angeles that unfortunately have fallen on difficult times, whether it be high levels of crime, whether it be challenges facing single parents, or parents that are not always able to be around all day long with their, with their children. I'm honored here today to recognize a couple of great citizens who have devoted their efforts to educating, empowering, and serving some of our city's most at-risk neighborhoods and making sure that the young people in those communities are absolutely given every chance to live out their hopes and their dreams. I'm here with George, Joe Killinger and George Pino, founder of Learning Links Centers, a socially responsible real estate investment company. Many of you may have just recently read in the LA Times, a wonderful story about the work that Learning Links has been doing. Learning Links had this amazing idea of purchasing apartment buildings in neighborhoods such as Baldwin Village in my neighborhood. And for those of you that have been in Baldwin Village, you know that one of the things that it has struggled with for almost two decades now are the amazing numbers of apartment buildings that are in the area and not one single family home. Many of us remember the days when Baldwin Village was the neighborhood that everybody wanted to get to. Everybody wanted to move there. And unfortunately, over the last 20 years, that situation has changed. But in comes Learning Links. Their idea was to actually purchase an apartment building in the neighborhood and do a couple of creative things in that apartment, in that apartment building. Other than just renovating the building, they wanted to renovate the life inside the building. What they decided to do was to set aside one of the apartments in the apartment building for an after-school learning center for children and provide the space free of rent for a teacher to not only live in that apartment, but run the after-school program. And again, for those of you that have thought about creative ways of trying to improve the quality of life for children, those of us that are big fans of after-school programs and prevention intervention programs, this may be one of the most creative ideas that we have seen in Los Angeles, where literally children who come home from school in a neighborhood that has been struggling without many after-school programs, they go inside, they come into their apartment, grab a quick peanut butter and jelly sandwich, and then they literally walk upstairs and there, in their own apartment building, is a beautiful, wonderful, staff-tutored learning center for them to use computers, finish homework, get assistance, and have an adult to essentially continue to work with them in terms of their assignments. Joe and George have not stopped at just one building. They have continued to look at several buildings in Baldwin Village. I believe they're up to number four or close to number five now. And they are hopeful, colleagues, that this is an idea that we could take up as a council and it's something that we'll be introducing later next week, to have us take a look at it, have our housing department and a community development department take a look at this innovative idea that they have come up with. Because I believe if we're ever going to provide incentives for building housing, if we're ever going to provide incentives to those who build and develop, that this is one of the most creative ways that we can say, "You can help us give back to the young people that need our support so desperately." And so with that, what I'd like to do is first introduce Joe, give him this, this resolution on behalf of the City Council. And then, as you can see, we have a very wonderful young lady standing next to me with her mother, who are both going to share brief remarks with us. So at this point, colleagues, gives me a great deal of pride to present this resolution on behalf of the City of Los Angeles for the Education Advantage Foundation and all the work that Joe and George are doing. Let's give them a round of applause and congratulate them for all of their work. Please.
You know, for over two years, I ran around trying to get anybody to listen to me about this concept and here I am today and I'm speechless, so I don't know how well this works. The whole concept has been well-received and I'm glad that we've got Karen and Deja Nora here to speak to everybody today. We weren't sure how the whole program is going to work, but it's turned out to be incredible. We had children that couldn't really read at first. Now they're, they're reading really well, working on computers. The whole idea of the Learning Links Centers is just about creating opportunity for these children and that's what we're trying to do. And the partner with Learning Links Centers, Education Advantage Foundation, that is a nonprofit, was all set up to also give these kids scholarships when they come out of our program. So it's great to receive this award for the foundation and the recognition for Learning Links Centers, so we want to say thank you to everybody.
Do you want to introduce Karen?
Yes. And this, this lady here is Karen Batiste. She's one of the parents out of the building. This is Deja Nora, her daughter.
Thank you.
Do you want to say something first?
Yeah. Okay. Good morning. My name is Karen Batiste and I live in the apartment complex where all of this is going on. And I believe that it's a very good program for me and my daughter and it's helped us tremendously. And I thank God for Joe for coming up with this ideal and just being there for us and our families and children, our community and everything. Police Department, Martin Ludlow, I've seen changes in our community and I feel very good about this and I just, I hope it keeps continuing, it continues to go on. This is my daughter and since she's been in the program, I've seen tremendous change. Because at first she could not read very well, but now she's doing way, way better, way better.
Want to say a couple words?
How ya doin'?
I did that too. Don't worry about it.
Just relax, just relax.
How ya doin'?
Good.
My name is Deja Nora Francisco. It's great to be here. I'm a little nervous.
What do you like about the program?
When we do our homework and then we go on the computer and we get to a little art.
Great. Excellent, excellent. So you like it?
Yes.
All right. Anybody want to say thank you to?
Thank you.
Again, colleagues, it's a real deal of honor to, to present these individuals here today. And again, this is another example of very creative corporate citizenship, really helping to make quality of life in Los Angeles increase for many communities who so desperately need it. So again, on behalf of the city, congratulations and thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. For our next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Zein.
It's a true pleasure to have these presentations this morning to two distinguished representatives of the city family, representatives of the Los Angeles Police Department, and also representatives of the United States military. If I can please have Master Sergeant Robert Kolsar and Staff Sergeant Craig Taylor come forward. And we also have a company with them, Colonel Sean Kelly and Staff Sergeant John Church. Good morning.
Sergeant Major.
Sergeant Major. Like, what did I say?
Staff Sergeant.
Sergeant Major, I'm sorry, excuse me. The gentlemen standing behind me represent the finest in not only the Los Angeles Police Department, but the United States military. We've got two presentations that we're going to be presenting, two, both are detective, members of the military, bronze, Bronze Star medals for activities and their deployment Master Sergeant Robert G. Kolsar, United States Army, Bronze Star Medal recipient, also detective with the Los Angeles Police Department. And we have, he will receive the Bronze Star Medal for exceptional meritorious achievement while serving as a team leader of Civil Affairs Team 42524 for the 425th Civil Affairs Battalion in support of Operation Iron Saber from February 2, 2004 through October 22, 2004. As a team leader, a position normally held by a commissioned officer, Master Sergeant Kolsar served with distinction. Devotion to duty and dedication to his team enabled him to successfully lead them through three major changes in missions, numerous firefights, the capture of several insurgents and enemy weapon stocks. Also responsible for the oversight of several major civil infrastructure projects around and Anjaf region. He married, has two children, member of the Los Angeles Police Department for 21 years, currently detective at Devonshire Narcotics Division. And when you wonder what the assignment with the civil affairs, it's the infrastructure, the rebuild, the rebuild of the country, all of the infrastructure. So we are now going to present to Master Sergeant Robert G. Kolsar, United States Army, the Bronze Star. And we have the Department of Army, United States of America, the certificate for the awarding of the Bronze Star. In addition, we have, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, the mayor, our controller, our city attorney, a resolution for the work that Master Sergeant Robert Kolsar did on behalf of the American people and also his work as a member of the Los Angeles Police Department, a resolution commending him for all his wonderful activities. The second recipient of the Bronze Star, Staff Sergeant Craig Taylor, United States Army, Detective, Los Angeles Police Department. Staff Sergeant Taylor received the Bronze Star Medal for exceptional meritorious achievement while serving as the Assistant Team Leader of Civil Affairs Team 42524 for the 425th Civil Affairs Battalion in support of Operation Iron Saber in Iraq from February 2, 2004 to October 22, 2004. Devotion to duty and dedication to his team enabled him to successfully lead them through three major changes in missions, numerous firefights, and the capture of several insurgents and enemy weapons stock. He's also responsible for the oversight of several major civil infrastructure projects around the Anjaf region. He is married and has two children, been a member of the Los Angeles Police Department for over 18 years, currently a detective with the Anti-Terrorist Division. We are now going to present to Staff Sergeant Craig Taylor. And we also have a resolution for Staff Sergeant Craig Taylor from the City Council, from the mayor, from our controller, our city attorney, commending him for his activities on behalf of the people of Los Angeles and the people of America. on behalf of the people of Los Angeles and the people of America. Thank you. And I must add that Colonel Sean Kelly is the former commander of the 425th Civil Affairs Battalion and Staff Major Sergeant, I think they have this backwards.
That's okay.
John Church is the Commander, Sergeant Major of the 425th Civil Affairs Battalion. Both of those military representatives are with us today for the presentations. I'm now going to turn the microphone over to our recipients for a few words. These men are in their military uniforms, and during the week, they're in our police uniforms, they're in plainclothes, and also their family members are with them, so we want to acknowledge their families and all the supporters. If we can please have them stand, the family members to be acknowledged from our recipients and also members of the LAPD, their colleagues that are here with them today. Thank you. You want to go first? There you go.
First, I'd like to say thank you very much for being here, part of the LAPD family. I missed you all while I was gone, and again, I appreciate your coming here to be here with my moment, myself and Craig. The LAPD has a very high respect overseas. It was kind of funny, Craig and I were talking to a couple of guys, and we're in Najaf, and we're getting mortared every day, and one of the guys said, "What do you do for a living?" I said, "Well, we're cops in LAPD." He said, "Man, that must be rough." And the mortars were exploding all around us, so just to give you a little insight of what it's like overseas. So again, thank you very much for taking your time to present us this, and we'll probably see you at the next tour.
As you can see, Bob was the talker of the team. Just want to thank my coworkers, City Council, for allowing this presentation to happen. Thank you.
Colonel, a few words from the Colonel.
I'd just like to thank everybody at the City Council for helping us to pay respect to these two exceptional soldiers. I know them as tremendously talented people, you know them as probably just run-of-the-mill cops, because that's the kind of quality of officers in the LAPD I've had the privilege of working with. And thanks to the members of the LAPD for coming out, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd just like to echo the Colonel's comments. The senior NCOs made a difference. We were very fortunate, and all our soldiers returned with only three wounded, and I attribute a lot of that to the leadership of Sergeant Coulser and Sergeant Taylor. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Let's hear it again for the members of the United States Military LAPD. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zein.
And we're going to go back for photos in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. And I think it's also appropriate to mention that as Chairman of the Personnel, you've been more than anybody else responsible, making sure that while they're on their tours of duty, neither they nor their family have to worry about their pay, have to worry about any impact to their benefits.
That's another thing, I'm glad you mentioned that, Mr. President, is that what we have provided for all of the city employees who get called up to active duty, the military pay does not balance with the city pay, so what we do is bring that up to make sure that the families have the financial stability, so they don't have to worry about the house, the mortgage, the car payment, and the families are separated, which is enough to cause anguish, and we don't want to cause additional grief. So we do provide that for all of our city employees that are called to military duty. And also, the Los Angeles Police Department has a representative of ours, Dennis Denoy, who's the representative from the Police Department. Dennis, come up here for a moment. The representative from the LAPD that coordinates this for all of the LAPD military personnel who are called up to active duty, that department does this, and we're currently surveying with the other departments throughout the city of Los Angeles to find out how we can utilize this service, because what Dennis does, and he's former military, is he makes sure the families are taken care of, all the benefits, all the activities that take place are proper, and we're now working with him and the Personnel Department to provide this to all city employees who are called up to active duty, not just the police, but there's a number of our city employees, of the nearly 40,000 city employees who are on active duty right now, have been called up in the reserves that are overseas and tsunami deployment. So I want to acknowledge you, Dennis, for the wonderful work you do on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, on behalf of the military folks. So, Mr. President, thank you very much. Folks, thank you for being here.
At this time, let me ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Cardiniss Garcetti, Grulhan Labanj, Lutlo Miskowski-Parks, Perry Reyes Smith, Vitergos White, Zein Padilla, 11 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. For our next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Garcetti. After Mr. Garcetti's presentation, colleagues, we will go through the agenda in dispense with consent items.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and a very good morning, colleagues. As we celebrate the bravery of the men who were just before us from the LAPD, we know that these acts of bravery and fighting for one's people occurs many places throughout the world. One of the places in which one of the longest ongoing wars for democracy and freedom has been waged is in the country of Burma, a place that I, I think many of you know, spent on and off two years of my life in the 90s alongside some of the men and women who very bravely have struggled for the most basic freedom, the most basic rights of democracy, of the right to vote, of the right to have elections. It is in that vein that today, here in Los Angeles, where so many of the Burmese exile community that fought for democracy live, that we honor one such brave woman, such brave soldier. And it is my honor to be able to have Da Ta Miu Mien here today, to be able to honor her publicly in front of this city and in front of this world for the work that she has done in fighting for democracy and human rights in Southeast Asia. Da Ta has worked very hard to promote the cause of freedom and democracy in her homeland for many years. In 1988, of course, when there was the crackdown in government, when people took to the streets to have the most basic right, that to vote, and then when the elections were held, and the government then didn't like the results and took it out on their own people, firing upon students, firing upon monks, firing upon women and children, firing upon many, many people around the same time as Tiananmen Square in China, but with many, many more casualties and very much less publicity. She has helped since leaving Burma after that period to help build a global solidarity movement for the freedom of the people in Burma. She was a leader in 1998 in asking this very council to vote unanimously to limit business with corporations that were investing in Burma, often using slave labor and other conditions to be able to earn their profits. We're proud to recognize her and her accomplishments today. I wanted to ask Jocelyn Ndokus, who's a friend, a longtime activist as well here with Burma Forum, and a member of Burma Forum in Los Angeles, to introduce Ta.
Thank you, Eric. It's really great to have the chance to say a few words about Da, because she is far too modest to ever say anything about herself, but she is one of those rare people who witnesses injustice and brutality by her government and then goes on to actually do something about it. She has worked tirelessly over the years to promote democracy and to encourage companies to stop doing business with the military junta in Burma, never missing an opportunity to influence and to effect change. She has been at every protest, she's been available at any hour, continuously welcomed people into her home who were fleeing persecution in Burma. She has been a mother not only to her daughter, but to so many others in need. Da and people like Da are one of the most important, the backbone really, of grassroots activism, because they're too modest to make themselves known, but that's exactly why it's important to honor them, because without them, movements like this would never survive. And on behalf of Burma Forum Los Angeles, we are so proud to introduce Da Miu Mien.
Good morning, honorable members of the City Council. I'm very grateful for the recognition you have given me. I humbly accept this in honor of the people of Burma. I have dedicated my life to the cause for human rights and democracy, but the Burmese people are still suffering. Please do all that you can to support Aung San Suu Kyi in her struggle for democracy in Burma. I will support her until my last breath. God bless you all, God bless our troops around the world, God bless Burma, and God bless the United States of America. Thank you.
And bless you too, Da. It gives me great pleasure on behalf of the City Council to be able to present this resolution to you today, to know that this is a struggle that is ongoing, and the work that you have done will result in freedom for the entire country of Burma one day, and we're proud to stand alongside you today. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Clerk, first, let's take a pause in the presentation segment of today's agenda and conduct some business here. For sort of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Grul moves, Mr. Vitergos seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Ludlow seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there's been a request to continue Item 10 to March 22.
Okay, members, any objection to continuing Item Number 10 to March 22? Seeing none, so ordered.
On the regular agenda, Item 1 is a public convenience or necessity item in Council District 2. A motion is required to grant or deny the application.
Okay, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. Public hearing is open and closed. Ms. Grul.
I'd like to make the motion.
To approve?
To approve.
Okay, members, we have a motion. If there's nothing further, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item 2 is a street vacation item, notice for public hearing. The Bureau of Engineering has requested that that matter be withdrawn and referred back to the Bureau.
Okay, any objection, members, to referring this item back to the Bureau of Engineering? Seeing none, the item is so referred. Next item, please.
Items 3 through 9 are items for which public hearings have been held.
And colleagues, public hearings have been held on these items in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing no such motion, any specials on Items 3 through 9? Request for specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Item 3 is an ordinance and carries over for a second reading. Next items, please.
And that second reading will be March 18. Items 11 through 25 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, members 11 through 25 now before us with that objection, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Members wishing to call any of these items special? Any specials on 11 through 25? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved, and again, Items 11 through 16 are ordinances and carry over for a second reading. Mr. Clerk, if that's the end of the regular agenda, let us now return to presentations, and let me call forward Ms. Han. Ms. Han, ready?
Mr. President, colleagues, I'm very pleased today to honor a very special neighborhood council in the city of Los Angeles. It's the Harbor City Neighborhood Council, and I have with me the president of that neighborhood council, Michael Fader, and the vice president, is that what you are? Vice president? And founding, and founder of the neighborhood council, Joanne Valley. And I wanted to bring this great neighborhood council to the attention of my colleagues and to the attention of the city. Many times, we are still, I think, hearing some of the less-than-successful stories of neighborhood councils out there, and I know in my Committee on Education in Neighborhoods, I hear some of the complaints and some of the grievances that are still winding their way through different neighborhood councils in the city, and many people are wondering how neighborhood councils are spending their $50,000 a year that is budgeted for each neighborhood council in the city of Los Angeles. So I wanted to bring this one in to show you an example of a neighborhood council that is doing exactly what neighborhood councils should be doing, and that's trying to figure out how to make their neighborhoods better, how to make their neighborhoods cleaner, tackling a problem and solving it among themselves without the interference of government. This neighborhood council decided that one of the biggest problems facing their community was graffiti, and I know that's true for a lot of neighborhoods in the city of Los Angeles, but it was just something that they felt was really having a negative impact on the quality of life of the residents and also on businesses. Western Avenue was a particularly hard-hit thoroughfare by graffiti, and a lot of the business owners really felt like it was, again, negatively impacting their business. So this neighborhood council decided to spend $12,000 of their $50,000 annual budget to hire someone to track and catalog graffiti. They hired an expert in this area, Tim Kephart, who worked with our LAPD Harbor Division, and worked at figuring out who was tagging, who it belonged to, and then cataloging it and finding out how they could actually arrest this person. And I'm pleased to say that in November, with the help of LAPD, they arrested, the LAPD arrested what they referred to as the most active vandal in the Harbor City area. So this is a great story, it's a great example of, again, a neighborhood council trying to find a way on their own, using their money, to do something very proactive in their community, and hopefully that vandal will, who probably not only tagged in your area, but tagged in other neighborhoods as well, has now been caught and won't do this anymore. So I wanted to present a certificate of recognition to the Harbor City Neighborhood Council on behalf of the residents of the city of Los Angeles, and we want to thank you, and I want to present this to Joanne and to Michael on behalf of the City Council to thank you for doing a good job and doing what we couldn't do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janice.
And I would like to ask both of you to say a few words, and then, and Tim is here, right? We might want to have Tim speak something too, but both of you can speak, and then Tim.
Oh, I have one for Tim, sorry.
Good morning. It was a pleasure, when we began our neighborhood council, to realize that our city was in such need. We really listened to our stakeholders, what their issue was, and graffiti was a major issue, and by coincidence, from one of our stakeholders, we found Tim Kephart, who tracks graffiti, has had a very good record in other communities, and we can't take all the credit, because it has been Tim, the LAPD, and also the GAP program that has helped us with this graffiti issue. The graffiti is down, and Tim is doing a wonderful job in tracking that graffiti, and we're really happy that we found Tim and hope other communities will look at this kind of tracking of graffiti. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank you, the council, for your support of neighborhood councils. I watch your meetings. I know there's been some learning curve over the last couple of years, but Harbor City Neighborhood Council was one of the first certified, and this recognition more or less goes to show that there is a light at the end of the tunnel. We're trying very hard. I'd like to accept this recognition on behalf of our stakeholders who approved the funding for this program, and also a very hard-working board that contributes a lot of time to the success of this neighborhood council, and hopefully to the betterment of the city of Los Angeles. Also, I'd like to thank Janice, she's been a great supporter, she's been there when we needed help, and thank you very much for continued support.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, and I also have a certificate for Timothy Kephart. We also would like to give you the certificate of recognition and tell you how much we appreciate your partnering with a neighborhood council to solve a problem that plagues all of us. So on behalf of the city of Los So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, Tim, congratulations, and we'd love for you to say a few words.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Han, Mr. President, council members, thank you very much for the wonderful recognition. Just what I'd like to say real briefly is I think the neighborhood council concept is a wonderful idea where some city or some areas may have issues relating to potholes and other things, and clearly Harbor City identified graffiti as a problem. What I hope more than anything is that this program further exemplifies how graffiti does not have to be a problem and is not, does not have to be the cost of being a city in Southern California. And more importantly, the graffiti is more than just random scrawlings on a wall. There's actionable intelligence. I'd like to recognize LAPD Harbor Division Captain Gannon for the outstanding support that we received from them and, of course, the Harbor City Neighborhood Council. Thank you. And to my parents that are listening, they called in from Philadelphia. If you ever wonder who calls in on a 213 line, you can hang up now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Han. And next, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Villarosa for a presentation.
Come on, guys. If I could have Battalion Chief, Chief John Vidovic, Battalion Chief Jay Turner, Building and Safety Ray Wooden, Dana Prevost, Bob Steinbach, and then Street Services Bob Carrier and Mike Carter. We got everybody? Come on over here. Don't be shy. I'll tell you, is this a great city and are we very fortunate to be living in a city where our city employees have demonstrated again and again and again their courage, their commitment, their compassion, their sense of responsibility when disaster strikes? And I can tell you, having, representing a part of the city that was victimized very heavily by the recent rains, a part of the city in the northeast and Highland Park and Glassell Park where you saw homes sliding down a hill. First, the first responders were the LA Fire Department. First responders were with them, were Building and Safety and Street Services and working with them, as I did, watching firefighters not just help evacuate a family, but do it with a compassion. Because think about this, everybody. When someone tells you, you've got 10 minutes to leave your home, you've got to leave now, that's a pretty heart-wrenching decision for somebody. And it's very traumatic. You see the tears well up in their eyes when they're told, you've got to leave your house and you may never be able to come back. And the compassion with which they handled the situation, I mean, you got to just think for a second. There was one man who had a piano. Remember that one? He had a piano, and all he cared about was, you got to help me get my piano out. And these guys all rallied around and said, sir, we'll get your piano out, but you got to come with us. And luckily, we were able to save the piano and we didn't have to move it out. But we saw another situation where a family just had been told for a few days that they really needed to leave. In fact, in the previous rain in January, they had had their home partially yellow-tagged. They were very reluctant to leave. But when Building and Safety came in and the Fire Department had really explained to them why it was so important for them to have to make the tough decision to leave their home, they did it. And watching up close as these, in this case, men, as all of these men, whether they were from the Fire Department or Building and Safety or Street Services, really worked together as a city family, which we hear those words bandied about all the time, but really as a city family, as a coordinated emergency response team. I'll tell you, I was absolutely flabbergasted and in awe of these folks. Some of them worked around the clock, I think 36 hours, 24 hours, they were there, whether they were in Building and Safety or the Fire Department. And I think for all of those who love to bash the public servants and, you know, and always want to argue about that we need to get more from less, I'll tell you, watching these guys do, go above and beyond the call of duty in the way that they did was really, filled me with pride. And I also want to acknowledge my staff, Lisa Sarno, among others, who heads up that staff. She too worked, in fact, you ought to come over here. What are you doing? Come on, come on and stand over here. You should be getting one of these as well. I'm remiss. Lisa Sarno, my staff, lives in Santa Clarita or wherever, Lancaster, Palmdale, somewhere way out there, and had to brave the rains and then be in the office or be on, in the community for 18-hour days. All of these people played an incredible role. I want to ask a representative from each department to come up and speak. With us today, we have Battalion Chief John Vidovic, Battalion Chief Jay Turner from the Los Angeles Fire Department, and also, I believe, Chief Rueda's with us as well. We were also at a fire just a few days ago also in the 14th Councilmanic District. We had about 150 firefighters there, 30 companies, I recollect. And again, I mean, you talk about an incredible incident that could have gotten out of control and been much worse, could have lost an entire apartment house, and not one injury to a firefighter or to a resident. We saved the residents there as well. The apartment house there was just an incredible act of, another act of going above and beyond. Also with us are Ray Wooden, the principal grading inspector with the Building and Safety, Dana Prevost, the, he's the geologist. He's the one that makes the analysis about whether or not the ground is moving sufficiently that we need to be concerned. Bob Steinbach, who, the Assistant Bureau Chief and Public Information Officer, was there day in and night. Incredible. And then with Street Services, Bob Carrier, the superintendent, and Mike Carter. If I could have John Vidovic come up and speak on behalf of the Fire Department for a moment?
Thank you, Councilmen. Thank you, City Council. I'd like to acknowledge our colleagues from Building and Safety, Bureau of Engineering, Street Services, who all assisted us in making it a team effort. Also, Department Management and Leadership. Their vision is to tell us as field BCS is, you never have a second chance to make a first impression. And we're there to assist our community. The firefighters from Glassell Park, Highland Park, Eagle Rock, I'm accepting on behalf of them today. They are the true heroes, the firefighters and paramedics. Thank you very much. Chief Turner allows him to say a few words.
My thanks to you, Councilman Villarosa, and my only thought is maintaining good thoughts for all of those residents who were displaced last week, and I'm hopeful that they recover soon. Thank you again.
Thank you. Chief Rueda?
Chief Rueda's a little shy. Chief Amatri wanted me to come over and first thank Councilman Villarosa for this very kind gesture of recognizing the firefighters and the paramedics for what they've done over the last several weeks with respect to storms. I want to introduce Chief Rueda. A lot of you see him at the emergency scenes. He's the deputy chief in charge of our Bureau of Emergency Services. He's behind the scenes a lot, but of the 3,500 men and women that work for the Fire Department, 3,000 of them work for Chief Rueda. So I want to invite him up to make some comments and introduce his other members.
Thank you, Chief. Quite an introduction. Glassell Park was only one of the communities affected by landslides and the storms, unfortunately. And the Fire Department, along with the rest of the city family, I think, just marvelous effort. It was really the foresight, I got to give credit to the Fire Chief for putting the, were standing up the EOC with the mayor's staff and having the foresight to put city services out in those communities that we knew were going to be impacted. And I have to tell you, there was a lot of evenings, well into the night, that firefighters, along with other city employees, very cold and very wet, out there working for the residents. So it's those folks that make us look good day in and day out and really provide services. So thank you for this opportunity here.
And Ray Wooden, Dana Prevost, and Bob Steinbach.
Just like to thank the councilmen for the recognition. We really didn't think it was anything special. We were just doing our jobs. It's, it's just been a very tough winter, very unfortunate for a lot of people. But we, we take it, we take our job very seriously and we were very sorry to have to ask some of the people to leave the residences, but it was also very necessary. So again, I'd just like to thank them for the recognition.
Thank you. Dana?
Well, I don't know what to say. I'd just accept, thank you very much for this recognition. As Ray said, we're just out there doing their jobs. And I really feel like that we're here today just accepting this on behalf of everybody in Building and Safety, who worked really hard and especially all the inspectors who were out there all hours of the night. I'd just like to say thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Our engineers are very soft-spoken, as you can hear. Inspectors, we don't have a problem talking. On behalf of the 850 members of the Department of Building and Safety, I really accept this on behalf of them. They work diligently every single day, day in and day out, to make sure that citizens in Los Angeles are safe. But when we get into emergency situations like this and we step up with the Fire Department, Street Services, LAPD, any members of the city family, it always works as a team. It's effortless and it's seamless, and we're proud to be part of that, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Adelman, would you like to say a few words on behalf of your crew?
Building inspectors and engineers, we are here to serve 24/7. Thank you.
Very good. Brevity. Bob Carrier and Mike Carter from Street Services.
Mr. Councilman, we'd like to thank you for this privilege and honor that you've given us and recognize the small contribution we made to the city. But it's good that we made a difference in people's life, and we do thank you for this honor and the privilege. We thank the Bureau also. We love what we do.
Great.
Yeah, we would just like to thank the council office for this recognition and also, this was a joint effort and it was just good to see all the agencies step up and respond as fast as they did. Thank you.
Thank you. And so now officially, on behalf of my council colleagues in the city of Los Angeles, I'd like to acknowledge John Vidovic, Battalion Chief. Battalion Chief Jay Turner.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Building and Safety Ray Wooden. Building and Safety Dana Prevost. Building and Safety Bob Steinbach. There we go. Street Services Bob Carrier. And Street Services Mike Carter. And again, it was a real honor to be able to watch these men and their work. And I'll tell you, our emergency response team can stand up to anybody's anywhere in the country and in probably the world. I'm very proud of them, as I know we all are. Give them all a big hand. Thank you so much.
And before we conclude, Mr. Labons would like to add a comment as well.
Villarosa, thank you for bringing this great team down and recognizing. And I just wanted to stand up and thank them. Your area in Highland Park got severely hit in this last storm.
And Glassell Park.
They were there before in other parts of our districts, and they're always there. They're absolutely always there. But I want to thank Battalion 2 especially there and for their efforts. It's just so important. And the impact, you know, there's a street that didn't have the seriousness that you had, but it's, Glendale Boulevard is closed and probably be closed for a while because we're not going to open it until we think it's safe, Laurel Canyon, until we think it's safe. And that determination is made in the interest of the public. Because with all this tragedy, you, we know, and Tony, you led the way and with remembering Rory Shaw, that city engineer who went out at night to see about a problem, to stop a problem, 24/7. I think Andrew Adelman gets the vote. Best speech, the shortest speech, 24/7. You're always there. Thank you, Mr. Villarosa.
And if I can also thank you, Mr. Villarosa. I know in Glassell Park, the homes are literally right across the street from CD 13. I wanted to thank not only the departments that you had here today, but your own staff, which was out there helping the residents be calmed and everything. And I know both of the residents there in Silver Lake and some of the areas that Tom talked about as well and in the valley, that assistance for folks whose homes have been red-tagged, please contact the Housing Department because we can still help you with the temporary relocation monies. So thank you very much.
And thank you for your leadership on that issue, Councilmember Garcetti. I have one more here, one more presentation. To a young man that all of you know very well, Louis Moreno. Louis, Louis, you all know Mr. Moreno as the... You're adopted. I'm going to say, I'm going to say good things about him. Give me a break. You all know him as the guy downstairs working in the garage, working with us every day to keep our cars safe, to make sure that nobody is coming into that garage that shouldn't be there. He's always there with a smile, willing to help out, always has a great joke, usually wants to talk about sports and has every little sports fact at the tip of his fingers. But I want to share a little bit about him and where he grew up and why he, we want to acknowledge him today. He grew up in Bull Heights. He's the only son of Lydia Moreno. He attended a school that I've worked with now for 25, 30 years when I worked for the Teachers Union, Euclid Elementary School. Also went to St. Isabel Catholic Church. We used to play you when I was at Santa Teresita. We usually won, by the way. And it was a graduate of Roosevelt High School in 1980, a few years after me. He attended East LA College where he received his AA in general education. And then he received his BA from Cal State LA in sports medicine. And he joined the city of Los Angeles family in 1980 with the Department of Recreation and Parks, coaching children at the city parks, and later transferred to the Department of General Services in 1985. He coached varsity football games at various schools, including Solisian, Cantwell, and Cathedral High School, all of which I've had some relationship with over the years, I think Mr. Reyes and I. And has worked with the East Los Angeles sports scene as a co-host for five years. He began his own show titled Sports Wrap-Up in March 2000, which covers community sporting events. And I see him there when I'm at the football games with the kids, and there he is interviewing everybody. And he's just been a great soul. He's worked every year to distribute over 200 toys to children and approximately 75 turkeys to low-income children. His most recent goal this year is to give away scholarships. So when you see Louis, you might just see a guy who's working downstairs and not know that he's a native son, a young man who understands how important it is to give back. And we want to acknowledge him today on behalf of the city of Los Angeles. We'd like to present you with this certificate, which acknowledges just some of the things you've done, both here in the city of Los Angeles as an employee, but even more importantly, as someone who cares about kids and sports and team and character and so on. On behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we want to acknowledge you.
All right. Well, before, before we hear, we have a few members who want to be heard, starting with Mr. Ludlow and then Mr. Zine, then Mr. Reyes.
Rise and just lend my voice of support.
I'd just lend my voice of support and just admiration. I first really appreciate you, Councilmember Viero Gosa, recognizing Louis today. Just recently, when we had the Crenshaw-Dorsey challenges and the game in the stadium, and that ultimately led to Dorsey playing Birmingham, there was Louis right on the sideline, filming, making sure that the perspective from Los Angeles youth was covered. He was interviewing parents and coaches and fans, and it was just a great thing to see. Not only are you one of the most humble servants this city has from top to bottom, you're also one of the biggest Raider fans in the City of LA. And you can't, you can't mention Louis without mentioning Eddie as well. We just really appreciate your leadership.
The Faders?
I'm sorry, it was Raiders. I think it was Raiders. Appreciate your years of service to the City of LA. And let me tell you, no matter what's going on in the city, when we pull into this building and both of you are there with a quick joke, something humorous, something human, you really make the job that much better. And so I'm just thrilled that you're being recognized today, and it's an honor to see you up here. And you look great. You look great. You're always doing good stuff for the city. Louis, you're the best. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Our next council member is Mr. Zine.
I'd also like to present Tommy Palma, who's also a member of Sports Wrap-Up, and Ruben Trevino. Tommy, good to see you. Congratulations.
As we are taking those pictures, Mr. Zine will be our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Louis, I've known you for a long time. And I didn't know that you had that background in sports, but I did know that you were a sports fan. I know that when the LAPD does the Baker to Vegas run, you're there. You're there video, and you're there reporting, and you make that long trip out to Baker to Vegas every year. And just last week, you were asking me if I was going to be there again this year. I know your dedication to the people of Los Angeles. You've been there a long, long time. You've maintained that security. You've maintained the comfort. You maintain the personality. You maintain that wonderful relationship with all of us. So, I wish you all, and honestly, until this morning, I didn't know you were retiring. I had no idea you were retiring. I had no idea it was coming up today. When you were in the suit, I just figured you were coming here to say goodbye to Ron, who's retiring. I didn't know you were going to retire. But I wish you the best. You've always been very friendly, very cordial, very efficient, very professional, and I wish you well in your future endeavors. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. I just want to rise and thank Louis for all his hard work. I want to echo the words of my colleagues. But I just want to say really thank you for, on behalf of the young people, all the folks that you have impacted in a great way. As a coach at Cathedral High School, I want to thank you for that. As a Cathedral fan myself, I want to acknowledge the fact that you give young people a reason to strive for something higher, something better, better grades, sportsmanship. And these are all attributes that allow persons to succeed in this society and more than be given the challenges our youth have, to give them that ray of hope, but letting them see themselves on the screen truly makes a big difference. Thanks, Louis.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Ms. Grule.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Zine, we're lucky he's not retiring. He's staying around. But, so we can give him a hard time every single day as we come in too. I just want, he's too young to retire. I just want to say thank you as well. You show that enthusiasm and excitement about the sports shows that you do, and the same excitement and enthusiasm when you see us in the morning, as we're driving in and sometimes racing on the phone, thinking what we're doing. But it's always a happy smile. How are you? Have a good day. How's the family? And we appreciate that not only are you helpful when we come in, but you protect us as well there. And I want to add my congratulations to everything you do on the sports activities, but also in your day job with us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grule, and for the point of clarification too. Ms. Hahn?
Yeah, thank you. I was getting kind of nervous because I was in the back taking pictures with, and then you guys, I came out, we were talking about retirement, so glad to know. Yeah, we're just recognizing you for what a wonderful person you are, Louis. And I too want to say, I love the fact, every time I come in, you always are so pleasant and greet me so nicely every time. But I love the way you always ask about my teams down in San Pedro and the Harbor area. And you have really given our young kids all over encouragement, inspiration, made them feel important, made them feel like somebody really cared about them. And your sports shows have really been such a really great addition to television in the City of Los Angeles. But you never fail to ask me about what's going on in my district with my team. So, thank you. Congratulations. Thank God you're not retiring.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank you. You're an ambassador. The first people, Louis, who come to City Hall see you, or Eddie. And you're an ambassador. But all of, not just an ambassador, you do a great job, which is so important, but then you have a love of something. Your love of Solisian High School, your love of community, your love of journalism, and your love of sport, and above and beyond. And the nice thing, members, is that you could duplicate this almost by 44,000. Because the beautiful thing about city employees, often, they're guys like Louis, or the women, men and women, when they're involved in their community, involved in some little extra project. Be that great ambassador. Keep us aware as we move people in and out of City Hall. But I congratulate for your extra work. So, I thank you, Mr. Viero Gosa, for recognizing these special people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. And Louis, the microphone's all yours.
Members of the City Council, thank you very much. It's an honor for me to be with you. I see you every day. All the employees here also, I see them every day. My biggest goal, like Councilman Viero Gosa says, is someday start the Sports Wrap-Up Scholarship Fund. We, like I said, my sports show's not only sports, but we give away, we emphasize on education also for the kids in the communities, and hopefully through the whole city of Los Angeles, because that's important, education then sports. But also, you know, I've also been giving back to the communities in the East LA area, in the Boyle Heights area, in every area that I can, toys. Every year, we give 200 toys on the sports show to the needy families, like Councilman Viero Gosa says, turkeys. But what we want to do is, hopefully, that's my biggest dream, is to give away scholarships to these kids. And Councilman Dennis Zine, I'm not retiring. I still got a long way to go here. So, I still got to, I still got to see you, you know, every day, every morning. But once again, I want to thank all of you, and it's always great to see all these beautiful smiles. And Ron, I'm going to miss you, buddy. Ron, we're going to miss you, bud. We're going to miss you. But anyway, thank you for this great honor. And once again, I thank Councilman Antonio Viero Gosa and the 14th District for this great honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. And thank you, Councilmember Viero Gosa. Our last presentation today, which has just been hinted at, is going to be led by Mr. Padilla.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if we can, just quickly, there's a special one that's been circulated. I'd like to knock out quickly before the presentation.
Okay, let's take up a special one first on the findings. Mr. City Attorney.
We do number eight yet?
We'll do eight, fourth with.
Fourth, fourth, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the extent of the severe destabilization of the Osborne Street Bridge has become known to city officials, the current status of the bridge poses a great risk to public safety. Immediate action is required to begin work on stabilizing the bridge. Before considering the substance of motion, council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. On the findings, if we can open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That item is before us. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, just want to ask for your support on this motion. We've had a lot of rains since just before the first of the year here in the Los Angeles area, and we've all seen on, almost on a daily basis on the news, a lot of the damage that it's caused to people's homes, to parks, to golf courses, to roads especially. And what this special motion does is begin to address the failure of a bridge that Ms. Grule is very familiar with, because it's on the border of her district and mine. According to Public Works and Bureau of Engineering, of all the roads, of all the bridges, of all the transportation infrastructure that's been impacted because of the rains, this is by far the worst. And because we're very confident in being reimbursed by the federal government for the repairs, the CIO, the Public Works, and others have come together behind this motion to have us kick-start the repairs and retrofit of this important transportation element, and I would ask for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? Seeing none, let's open the roll on the item. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That item is approved. Fourth with on that, please. Okay. Now, we'll return to your presentations and like to recognize Mr. Padilla. And members, you can start pressing your buttons now.
If I can have my staff bring forward the certificate. There's probably no better way for us to begin this presentation, colleagues, than by asking you to join me in unison now to your microphones. Shhh. You need a little practice. For those of you watching at home, you know, when the camera's focused in on somebody speaking from this podium under public comment, or one of the councilmembers trying to weigh in on a debate, and you hear this shhh coming from the echoes of the council chambers, it's Officer Ron Curry, our Sergeant-at-Arms here in council chambers, part of the tremendous, tremendous job that he does as a member of the Sergeant-at-Arms team here in council chambers to keep order in council chambers. I think it's clear, everybody understands here, and everybody feels safer here because of the primary responsibility he has, that in protecting the city employees who conduct business in this very chamber, the council members, the other officials, all the staff. But it's not just us. That's just where the job begins. It's in protecting the public. We've been very fortunate here in Los Angeles that we haven't had incidents, but we don't have to go too far back in history to look at, I believe it was San Bernardino just a couple of years ago, the City of New York just a year and a half ago or so, Washington, DC, and other establishments of government where they have had unfortunate incidents, violent incidents, because it's a place where people gather for a common good. We have not had that here in Los Angeles, in large part because of the professionalism, the hard work, and the dedication of Officer Ron Curry and his colleagues. Let me just say, colleagues, that he's been at this for, what, about a quarter of a century now. He joined the Los Angeles Police Department in 1970, February of 1970, but became part of the Sergeant-at-Arms team here in the Los Angeles City Council in July of 1985, soon after the Olympics, Mr. Labange, soon after the Olympics, Ron Curry made his way into council chambers. It has been really an institution ever since. I think those of us who've gotten to know him and to be protected and shielded by him really also thank him for his patience and his compassion, not just with us, but for petitioners to the council, protesters to the council, and on occasion even a lobbyist here in the building. His trademarks are his professionalism, his smile, and certainly his gentleness. Not easy for us big guys, right, Ron? But something that we do from the bottom of our hearts. And so, colleagues, I know several of you want to speak. I'll end my remarks at that and just say that he's joined here by his family, but I'll let him introduce his family. But Ron, on behalf of all of us here on the council, those who have been on the council in the past and who can't join us, although we are joined today by former councilmember Rita Walters, everybody you've served, every councilmember, every mayor, every city clerk, every CLA, every CIO, on and on and on, I want to thank, thank you for your faithfulness to the city and the excellence and professionalism with which you've done your job. Thank you.
Now, colleagues, I know there are a lot of special guests that are here today that would like to say a few words as well before, and you've got a long way to wait. You're not going to be able to talk for a good half hour.
Mr. Chair, before we actually hear from councilmembers...
Yeah, I was going to say the guests that are here first.
Yeah, I'm not alone in this presentation. Chief McDonald, Chief Carter, I know you have a couple of very special presentations as well, if you'd join me at this time.
Thank you. I'd just like to, on behalf of Chief Bratton and the men and women of the Los Angeles Police Department, this is an honor to be able to come up here and to acknowledge Ron Curry's years of service. As Councilman Padilla touched on, Ron Curry has served literally a generation of political and civic leaders right here in this very famous room. He's an LA native, been on the police department since 1970, and you think about all the changes that he has seen in this organization, in this city, in those many years. While this is such a beautiful city and many, many beautiful places to work within the city, Ron chose to stay within Central Bureau, his whole, or within Central Division, actually, his whole career. And I have never heard of anybody with 35 years on the job staying in one division their whole time. So, that's truly unique as well. The position that he held here, that he holds here at the council as Sergeant-at-Arms position is truly a unique one within the police department. On a daily basis, he interacts with people from all walks of life who come here for city business. He has the ability to be able to, in a low-key fashion, to maintain order without offending anybody, and at the same time, everybody coming before you here is important, has significant things to say to everybody, and wants to have their piece heard. He has the ability to be able to temper that to such a degree where business goes on as well as it does. So, I want to say thank you for your 35 years of dedicated service to the people of Los Angeles, wishing you the best of everything in retirement. And I'd like to present you here with this pin acknowledging your years of service. Congratulations, Ron.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Ron, for the last 11 years I've been coming to City Council, and in the very beginning, you taught me several things. One was to move off the floor. And the other, in a very deep baritone, shhh, to be quiet. But during everything that you did, you were a friend. You showed me the inner workings of City Council, and it's really my honor, on behalf of the Chief of Police and the Men and Women of Los Angeles, to present you with the chief's plaque and wish you well. Thank you, sir. And Ron, I brought your captain with me. Hi, Ron. Hi, Cap. Hi, Ron. How are you? Yeah, you know, as his, I guess, last commanding officer, you know, we're retiring within a month of each other. And came on in the same year. It's been an honor and a pleasure, and you're a good friend, and I appreciate it. Thanks, Ron.
We also have Andy Fox here to make a little presentation on behalf of the firefighters.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council want to be here with other members of the department on behalf of Chief Amatri to acknowledge Ron's service to the city, 35 years, and 20 here in the City Council. It was back in 1988 where I first met Ron, when I was a labor leader with United Firefighters. And he was just new and coming, and on a personal note, he's seen me go through the promotional ranks. But as the council knows, and President Padilla has pointed out, very difficult job keeping order in this council and doing it in a nice way. And I think that's the biggest compliment we can pay to Ron and his family. He's always a gentleman. He's always a professional. And the only mistake Ron probably made was he got in the wrong line 35 years ago. So, Ron, on behalf of the fire chief, yeah, on behalf of the fire chief and the men and women of the fire department, we want to congratulate you on your 35 years of service, and we leave you with a little memento of our appreciation. Congratulations.
We also, I know, have Councilmember Walters, and if you'd like to say a few words to?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I hadn't anticipated being called on, but it's really nice, and particularly for such a gentleman as Ron Curry. And he really is a gentleman, just such a nice gentleman. And this activity that goes on here, you know, it gets wild and woolly from time to time. But he's always calm, and he's always quiet, and he just looks at you and smiles, and you know it's time to be quiet and to calm down. But Ron... But Ron, I wish you the very best. You've given outstanding service to the city of Los Angeles, and it was indeed my privilege to be here during part of your tenure, and it was indeed an honor to come down today to say one last hello and one last goodbye. Won't be the last goodbye, the last hello, but in this chamber it will be. The best to you.
And our general manager of the Department of Water and Power, who used to be, I think, something around here, would like to say a few words to.
Greetings from the Department of Water and Power. I was here in 1985 and served in this room. There were two Rons. One was a gentleman, the one to my left. And I'd like to just say that, interesting to be able to keep order, to honor the First Amendment, and keep a sense of humor, whether it's clowns to Nazis, Shapiro to God knows what. The, as Councilwoman Walters said, the, it gets wild and woolly, but Ron, no matter what it was, was always calm and always thinking of the respect that the public needed in this room, but also respecting what the business was that was going on in this room. And it takes a rare person, and he is a rare person, and I think we're all going to miss him, and a fixture in this room that will be very missed as you proceed. Thank you.
And one last speaker before we go to the council members. I know that Jim Tatro was a classmate, maybe he'd like to say a few things. You can compare the stripes, and it's great to have you back here as well, Jim.
Thank you very much. It is, it's bittersweet to be here today to say goodbye to Ron because we did start together in February of 1970. We carpooled a little bit. He, I don't remember, he said that we picked him up and he was always on time. I really, I'm really suspicious of that, but, you know, we, Ron, by the way, in 1970, for, as an observation, was the only African-American member of our class. And I also remember a very popular member of the class, as you would guess. He was well-liked, we had a good time. I got to know him again because we carpooled and we tried to study to get through the programs. I will say that there was a precursor to his assignment here and what we have all recognized of his whispering, because he did that to the class before instructors came in to get our attention and show, so he was born to be here. I'm going to miss him. I always felt that I had good access to the council with Ron here, so anyway. But I thank all of you very much for having us. Thanks to President Padilla for recognizing Ron. He's truly a great guy, and I know we all wish him best of luck in his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, members of the city council, beginning with Mr. Ludlow, to be followed by Mr. Smith, Mr. Zine, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ron, I'm going to be very, very brief. I just can't even begin to tell you how much it's been a pleasure to work with you. Everything that has been said about your class, just your professionalism and the way in which you've handled this post has just been amazing. Chief Fox said something about you keeping the room in order. Your toughest job has been keeping this side of the room in order, and you do it with such dignity and such professionalism. I have never met anybody that can quiet a room down with just a look of an eye. When you walk up next to you and you give us that look, you don't even have to say shhh. You just look at us and we know we stepped out of line a little bit. Wish you the best in your future endeavors, your wonderful family. You have earned this retirement like no one has. We just thank the world of you, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to be on the council the day that you retired. It is more our honor than yours. We are so thrilled to work with you. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Mr. Smith.
Well, Ron, I've been one of the few people that have enjoyed being here all those 20 years with you, and it's been a real pleasure, I got to say. Your bright smile, your cheery attitude, your sternness when it had to be stern, but I always ignored it anyway, and you let me know how much you appreciated that. But you've been a real blessing to us all here, and I remember when I became a reserve officer, you put me up against the wall the first day and patted me down to make sure I wasn't carrying my gun. But we've had a lot of fun here with you, and I just thinking, you know, you've been here longer than Chief Bratton, you've had certainly more use of force than Chief Bratton. I've seen you rolling on the floor around here a few times, and you take a lot more abuse than he thinks he gets from the council. You've taken a lot more than he ever took from the council, and so you're really a real star for us, and so I've been negotiating all night with Chief McDonald and Chief Bratton to make sure we recognize you properly, that you're the real star around here, so here's some stars to wear on your collar today. Good luck to you, God bless you.
Thank you. And Ron, Councilmember Smith and Zine say you can cruise along with them anytime you want. Speaking of Mr. Zine, he's our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ron, I've known you for many, many years, from the time I was here at the, representative from the PPL, and a time in history where we couldn't come beyond the red rope, and you made that very positive and not hostile, both members of the LAPD for many, many years. And I look at your profile with the department, no personnel complaints, like Uncle Frank from the Jimmy Kimmel Live, very few arrests, because you've been able to handle it without making arrests. And I've seen you escort people out of here on a few occasions because they've come unruly and always with that professionalism, that diplomacy, and once they get to the front door, then the matter is solved. All the committee meetings you attended, sometimes people think you're only here keeping order in the council chambers, but all the committee meetings, I'll be in a committee meeting, you'll walk in the room and we know that we've got tranquility because you're there, and your appearance there in and of itself sends that professionalism, that demeanor of the people. The LAPD's here, Ron Curry's here, you better behave yourself. You've been a delight to work with, I'm sure, with the captain and the supervisors that you have. You've been a delight for them because you haven't been a, as we call a paper nightmare, where they have to generate papers and investigations and complaints. It's been a real pleasure working with you all these years, and it's so quick to see it go by, so quick to see from 1970 to here it is now, and to see all the council members who have passed, and a real tribute to have former council member Rita Walters come here and wish you that farewell to come down to City Hall to pay that recognition to you. So you've had an impact on so many people, so many people, and you really don't even know how many people you've had an impact on just because of your demeanor here, the Sergeant-at-Arms of the Los Angeles City Council, and it's always been a tribute to this department, the LAPD, and to you for what you've said as a pace, as a tone for those people who will come after you. And that position was put in place many years ago to safeguard the chambers and to safeguard democracy and freedoms that we have in the city. So the best wishes to you in the future. I know those hash marks are wonderful. Maybe you'll consider to join the reserves like Councilmember Smith and I and go out there once, twice a month and drive Chief McDonald and Chief Bratton crazy. We'd happy to have you with us, but you really, you've really set a tone. You are the example of a professional police officer, community policing at its finest that you've been able to generate through your years here, and I hate to see you go. I really do, because the times we go out to lunch and we've chatted about law enforcement and things and how history has changed, and it's a sad day on one end, on the other end, you've got your wonderful family to be with you and enjoy those other wonderful activities. And seeing you walk around, the office is trying to get the council members to come down for the corm, I mean, all the times that you've done that, all those wonderful memories. So God bless you and your family, many, many years of happy retirement checks, because on the first of the month, and that direct deposit, you'll see that retirement check. It's a happy day. Thank you, Ron, for all you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Our next speaker is Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to wish you the very best, Ron. It's wonderful to see your family here. I also want to say to Commander Tatro, it's wonderful to see you here, fitting well with all of us. We really got a lot of fans here as well, and you know that. But Ron, a lot of wonderful things have been said about how you keep order and decorum and prevent physical altercations in this room. I have the dubious distinction of being able to remember one of those potential incidents very well. It's my sincere hope that you don't remember a thing about it and that the statute of limitations has passed, but there was a time, several years ago, longer than whatever the statute could possibly be, when I might have gotten a little uppity about, perhaps it was the former member from the 10th District, perhaps he was trying to eliminate Homeland Security funding shortly after 9/11, and you might have had to do your thing and prevent a bad situation from getting much, much worse, teaching me something about myself and teaching me something about you. You gave me just the most funny, quizzical look. You were like, "You? I can't believe it." But you, it's been wonderful knowing you, and I just, I just, I just can't tell you how proud I am to have worked with you for these past several years, and I wish you and your family all the best, Ron. Good luck to you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Our next speaker will be Mr. Reyes. Mr. Reyes?
I'm just amazed at the turnover we're getting in this building in the past year and a half, and I hate to see you go, Ron, especially in my plum committee. When people are dealing with property rights, when they're dealing with, is that wall really going to block my view? They're really angry. And so every time I begin committee, I let them know, we need to hear the folks, let's be courteous, and that's when you stand up. I mean, that's when everybody turns around, that's when I look at you, we smile, and everybody knows Ron's in the house. But that being said, you are a gentleman, you've been very professional, even when folks want to attack, get physical, you have ability to just calm them down, wrap them up, and take them out, and that I will always treasure, and I'm going to miss you. And yes, that shhh is very profound. I think that's going to stick in my head forever, and I'll probably be using that for the next guy that comes in, and we'll have to give him some lessons. But thank you so much for your hard work, and I met you back in 1989 when you were telling us, get behind the pillar, get behind the black line there, and you're still doing it, and what else can I say but, muchas gracias. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
One thing that I'd like to make sure the Angelenos understand, we're not honoring somebody or thanking somebody who has this lofty title. He's one of our officers, he's a public servant. That's who we're honoring today. I just wanted to say, Ron, Mr. Curry, sir, thank you so much for everything that you've done. The wonderful thing that I've seen about you and learned to know about you is when you stand there and with your presence and with your being, you have been able to get people who are very outraged or very bothered or just getting out of hand, you have found a way to reach into them and to get them to realize that they need to calm down and get the situation right. But you would never know that the man who got them to do that actually has a firearm on his side. That's wonderful. You have actually brought the best out in people here as best you can, you've brought the best out in you. If you don't mind me saying so, I think your mama did a good job. You have earned our respect, our appreciation, and you are one classy human being. Thank you so much for all of your service and for touching all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and I grew up in City Hall with Ron for many, many years, and you probably thought she'd never be a council member, how could that ever happen? But you, I think, as Mr. Cardenas said very well, classy guy, people didn't know that you necessarily carried a weapon on your side because you convinced people to either calm down or to go by the rules, but it was that pleasant smile, although we have all had the Curry look, we all have seen the Curry look. And so those of you that have not seen it, you're lucky because he does send a clear message, but you've been a tremendous asset and a friend to all of us, not just someone who protects us and makes sure things run smoothly, but a good friend, someone we can sit and talk to and be with and know that we are protected here in City Hall. So you will be very missed, but I know you will come and visit us and probably sit out here and smile and say how lucky you are not to be working anymore, but please do come back and visit, Ron.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Our next speaker is Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I just wanted to say good luck to you in your retirement and just echo what all of my colleagues have said today, what a great gentle giant you have been in these council chambers. And I'll never forget the first time I was in a heated argument back here, I don't know, was with a council member or my staff, but you came and did shhh, and I didn't know who said that, and I turned around, I said, "Don't you shhh me," and I looked up in your face and I got quiet. So, thank you.
And that is incredible, Ron. That is an incredible thing.
I know. No one else has been able to do that for me. And you know what else I wanted to comment on? You know, we have these council meetings now that we take out on the road, and we've gone into every part of the city for our council meetings, and some of them have gone very, very late at night. And even though I consider myself an independent woman, Ron always insisted that he walked me to my car and all the other women on the city council, he made sure that we got to our cars safely, and I always, I thought that was a really caring thing for you to do. So we're going to miss you, but good luck.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Ron Curry, you're a special police officer, 35 years in one division, in Central Division, and 35 years, all the change that you've seen in downtown, and 35 years as the first face often, the one who comes to council, directing the citizens how to fill out the card, all the work. And it was a serious tragedy in San Francisco that led us to have two sergeants-at-arm at the time. Previously, it was just one. John Madras was the sergeant with that crew cut captain, and I think you were following his lead back there. He had just a nice crew cut. And the big event every year back then in the late '70s was May Day, when the communists actually came in to attack city council chambers. I mean, it was a real, real thing, and I remember how you guys would have to help. That was just one element of this whole history. But all the people that you've helped, Ron, and the outstanding work, I like what all the representatives of the police department said, but as Captain Tatro said, you're a classmate, Commander Tatro, excuse me, I did that twice in the last week, Jim. But as Commander Tatro said, you were a leader. You were a leader in your class, you were a leader in this chambers, and what you said about Janice Han and her reaction to how you kind of helped us all. And I want to speak not just as a councilperson, but also want to speak as a staff person, because I was a staff person for 27 years before I got here, and I see the staff person around here. Often you would help us staff, you would know the weather of what was going on in here, the temperature, so to speak, and the pulse, to give us guidance and direction. You're truly a special, special person with a special family. I thank you and hope you have a 35-year-plus retirement and enjoy and discover the area outside the council chambers of the great city of Los Angeles. Thank you, Ron Curry.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. And especially if it's in the 4th District. Whoa. And there's the loaf of bread you've been waiting all those years for.
Mr. Garcetti, because Ron Curry is an angel in the city of angels, from the monastery of the angels. Thank you, Ron, for your family. Have that this weekend with light toast and butter, it's real good. See you.
Well, in conclusion, Ron, before we hear from you, you've clearly made democracy work in these chambers, and I personally too want to thank you, not only just in these chambers, but up in the committee rooms. You probably know and have heard more than anybody in City Hall, and I think we're all looking forward to your memoirs, The Holden Years, and all the secrets that you know. We also have some correspondence that's been sent in, some congratulations from John Walsh and Leonard Shapiro, Howard Watts, Ted and Tut Haze, Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, and we'll put that in a little folder for you to enjoy. And as one last thing before we hear from you, we actually have decided we don't want to say goodbye to you after all of that, so Zine, Smith.
Let him go. City Attorney.
And we actually made findings with the assistance of City Attorney that the threat of Ron to retire is an act of civil disobedience.
That's right. While we are waiting for--
Poses a significant threat to the peace in Los Angeles City.
And while we are waiting for Ron to speak, we have one last council member, Mr. Villarogosa, to say a couple comments, and then we'll hear from you with your hands behind your back.
Ron, I was, I was in the back fielding some questions, Ron, and I haven't had as many years as some of my colleagues have with you, but I'll tell you, what a gentle giant you are, a man who always has a smile on his face, whose watchful eyes have, make us all feel a comfort of knowing that we have the LAPD in our midst, and just a decent man. And I want to say to you, I wish you the best of luck on your retirement. I know that-- I know that you are going to be very active, and we're looking forward to many, many years of you writing us from time to time and coming to visit. And maybe we can go visit you as well. So congratulations.
All right. Mr. Curry, the microphone is yours.
Just want to say thank you for everything you've done. It's been a terrific experience working here. Seen so many people, so many changes. It's just hard to really feel that I'm really going. Yes, I'm speechless. But there's one thing I always remembered from one wise old council member named Gil Lindsay. When things got tough and it was contentious on both sides, he always said, my friends are my friends, and my friends are my friends, and I always support my friends. So with that, I would just bid you adieu and say goodbye to all my friends. Thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce my girlfriend, Rochelle Williams. My son, Brian, this is the baby. My best friend, Richard McCauley. He's also a Detective III in 77th Division.
And if I can ask all members to come to the well, we will take a picture together.
I just wanted to be noted to other obligations. Members who aren't here today, I know Ms. Akelsey, Mr. Parks would certainly want to salute you, Ron, and Ms. Perry. So I just wanted to get their name on the record for their, to salute your greatness, Ron. Thank you.
And just after that, we'll be moving on to public comment. And we're going to reconsider the ordinances since we have 12 members present now. We can open the roll on reconsideration on those items.
And that, Mr. President, that would be Items 3 and 11 through 16.
Okay. It's Items 3 and 11 through 16, colleagues. If we can open the roll on reconsideration, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are before us again. If we can open the roll on those items, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. We can take a public comment this time. I know folks have been waiting patiently on that. We'll take that. Now it's time for public comment. We'd like to invite forward to the microphone, Ediohenes Luvianos Ruiz, Miguel Angel Perez, Arnaldo Donizde, Gerardo Santana, Candido Mendoza Santana, Jose Santana, and then Joan Rivard.
Señor presidente y concejales, he venido más a luchar como campesino que soy, como mi padre fue campesino, y estas palabras que estoy dando se las prendí a él. Luchar ahora.
Councilmembers, President, I've come again here as a farmer, like my father showed me, to be a farmer and fight for my rights and tell you.
Como luchó tanto, como nosotros andamos luchando, señor presidente.
Since he struggled a lot, and we are also struggling, Mr. President.
Y se lo agradezco a mi padre, que me enseñó a trabajar las tierras.
I'm grateful for my father, who showed me how to work the soil.
Y por eso estoy aquí en frente de las autoridades.
That's why I'm here, in front of the authorities.
Y gracias.
And thank you.
Yeah, hi, hello, councilmembers. My name is Jose Santana, and I came here, you know, to beg God, to tell God to let us keep South Central Farm on for the first time in La Mida. One of the reasons in which we come here begging God, you know, is that we really want this farm, you know. This farm helps us, you know. Instead of us being in gangs, drugs, you know, we should, you know, free try and come here, you know, do have a lot of fun, you know. And instead of us doing bad stuff out there in the world, we should be doing something, you know. We learn many different cultural stuff that our parents taught us because, you know, they show us how to respect, you know. So we come here begging God, telling God people to let us keep sausage farmers. Yeah, may not listen to me, but you know, it just is as me, as a young student, you know, really want to keep on with my life, you know. As me, I'm not embarrassed to talk to public. I'm used to this. And I will just keep on, you know, begging for South Central Farm. Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down and testifying, too.
One more time for the record. Miguel Angel Perez, La Sonja Land Youth Coalition, Wild Heights Neighborhood Alliance stands in support of the South Central Farm. As you heard, two beautiful examples of human beings and human kindness, from the age of experience to the youth, speaking to the city of Los Angeles and to the world. They are saying something very hard and clear, that they belong to the land and they're part of the land. The past is speaking, and the future is speaking. It is very important that we all take in consideration of the question of South Central Farm and the question of democracy and participation. One more time. Aquí estamos y no nos vamos. Tierra y libertad. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We appreciate your presence here today. Joan Rivard.
Hello.
Hello.
I'd like to talk about the fines that have been levied, not only in this council chamber, but all across the country. The Constitution says no unreasonable fines. And when we think about those $1,000 fines that poor people have to pay for this, that, and the other thing now, it's a huge percentage of their income compared to the percentage of upper-income people. And it's not fair. And, you know, some of the people I've talked to don't seem to understand how hard it is for people out there, how they're just struggling like crazy, they have two and three jobs, you know, and then they get slapped with one of these $1,000 fines for, you know, dropping a piece of paper, or they get their car confiscated because they didn't know that if they put an old couch in an alley, such a terrible, terrible thing could happen to them that destroys their whole family. And it's not fair. You know, it's not something we can be proud of. And this council was very courageous in standing up for peace at a certain time. And I'm hoping that if I speak, possibly some people will think about this, that the ideals of the founding fathers were that people should live without fear, just like it says in the Bible, that people will be, each man will be under his vine, and none will make them afraid anymore. And when you're driving down the road and you think that if something goes wrong or some law happens that you didn't know about, you're going to get a $1,000 fine, or your car's going to be taken, that's living in fear all the time. And not only for the person that this might happen to, but for their whole family. You know, with the, this is not isolated. It's not only the fines. It's the rents, the prices of houses, the prices of cars. All of these things have been quadrupled over and over. And I see people that are working all the time, they're dead tired, you know, they don't have money for Christmas presents, they don't have money to go see their relatives across country. People are living on empty. They really are. And these fines and these car confiscations, for a lot of them, for things that normal people will do at some point or another, they're not fair. And I want to make the point that the word draconian, which some of the lawmakers proudly say, oh, these laws are draconian. Well, Drakon was the guy who we called Dracula, and he was also Dragon the Impaler. His strategy was to impale his enemies and, you know, I don't know how to say this, but force them down onto a spike and tie their hands and feet until their families had to watch them slowly die for hours and hours. And this is our role model when we make these kinds of laws. And they're not helping anybody. You know, they might be helping some revenue enhancement, but they're not helping any people make the ideals happen that this country was supposed to be founded on.
Thank you, Ms. Rivas. If I can respectfully ask you to conclude, please.
Thank you. And I'd like to remind again, and I know people have this in their heart, we want to do what Jesus said, to treat other people the way we want to be treated. And none of us would like to be treated the way these people are treated when they get these fines and these confiscations, when they are low income and they're already just struggling to keep their home. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony here today. Thank you. That closes our public comment for today. Mr. Clerk, if we can move to the special agenda, please.
You wish to recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting?
Yes, please.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villagosa, White, Zine, Pidiya, 10 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
We have a bare quorum, members, so if I can just ask folks, we have a short agenda for the special meeting, but if we can just get through that. So first items, please.
Item one is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay. That is not necessary. Anybody wishing to call that special? If not, let's open the roll on item one, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Mr. Ludlow, I saw your speaker.
10 ayes.
No, okay. That is approved, then. Next item.
Item two is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, there's no cards, so we'll open and close the public hearing. Mr. Cardenas.
Item two, special. I ask that we adopt the ordinance of which the first page has been substituted and distributed and approved the memorandum of understanding.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. That finish the special agenda? Special meeting agenda?
That concludes that agenda, Mr. President.
Okay. Next order of business, then.
Back to the regular meeting. Council has motions for posting a referral.
Let's post and refer those.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused to leave at 12:15 on Wednesday, March 30th, for city business. That meets council policy.
He is excused.
Councilmember Labange requests to be excused to leave at 11:00 on Wednesday, April 6th, for city business. That meets council policy.
He is excused, too.
And Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused to leave at noon on Wednesday, March 9th, for city business. A motion is required.
All right. Mr. Villagosa kindly makes that motion, and Mr. Weiss seconds it.
That does clear the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you. Any announcements, colleagues? Announcements? Mr. Labange.
Members, this week and on Sunday morning, the 20th Annual Running of the Los Angeles Marathon will cover the streets of this great city, starting in the heart of the 9th District and running out through many of our districts, the 10th District, 8th District, a little bit the 5th District, 4th District, et cetera. But 20,000 people will run through the streets of Los Angeles. And I just wanted to invite everybody. Curry said to take the subway, it's the best way around all the blockades, and come and enjoy and cheer the runners on for the 20th anniversary of the Los Angeles City Marathon. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas and then Mr. Ludlow.
On the note of the marathon, yes, thank you very much, Councilmember Labange, for mentioning this wonderful event that's been going on for years here in the city of Los Angeles. I'd also like to thank the city workers and our police officers who helped make this one of the best-run events throughout the country and something that is certainly admired by many, many cities. Matter of fact, just in Orange County, just this past year, they started a marathon, and they basically were inspired by the alley marathon to do so, and they had a successful event as well. And also, I'd like to thank the for-profit organization that runs the marathon for their wonderful work and their work with the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Ludlow.
Two things, Mr. President. Just wanted to add to the comments about the marathon. I want to say a special thank you to the marathon staff and the city staff, as members in my district have sometime, from time to time, been the victims of the track, the marathon track. Just want to say thank you for the work that was done to make sure that some of the areas were reorganized so that people could actually move on Sunday. Other thing I wanted to mention, I want to thank the LA City Clerk and all the city employees that have done a great job of promoting. Tuesday is Election Day in the city of LA. I want to encourage everyone to get out and vote. It's your right, it's constitutional right here in this country, and it's what makes this country great. No excuse. You can't complain on Wednesday if you didn't vote on Tuesday. We need everybody to get out to the polls and vote on Tuesday. Best of luck to all the candidates for all the races.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. And just as a reminder, colleagues, on Tuesday, this council will be in recess for Election Day, so there will not be a normally scheduled meeting for Tuesday on Election Day because of Election Day. So please do all you can to encourage your constituents to get out there and vote. Any other announcements, colleagues? If not, can I please ask everybody in council chambers to rise for adjourning motions? Adjourning motions?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Villagosa.
Yes, members, I'd like to adjourn in memory of a young man, Mario Prado, who lived next to me on Lansdowne Avenue when I bought my first home. He was a neighbor, very special person. He had some disadvantages in life. He was developmentally disabled. And he worked as the neighborhood gardener and handyman for almost 25 years. I was the first one to kind of tell him, you know, you've got some skill set, and you ought to work in the neighborhood. You're always volunteering, helping people out. And, you know, he was one of those people in the neighborhood that was always picking up your trash and sweeping in front of your sidewalk and, you know, washing your car. And he just was a great young man. And we're going to miss him very much. He was well-loved by his family and cared for his grandmother in her last years. And his brothers and sisters truly adored him because he was a guy that took what God gave him and took it to the max. He really did. And so I'm going to remember him with great fondness and mourn his loss.
Thank you, Mr. Villagosa.
Also, two more.
Please.
I'd like to adjourn in memory of Jeffrey James Legaspi and express our deepest sympathies to a member of our city family, Loida Garganta. Loida Garganta works here at City Hall in Creative Services. Her nephew, Jeffrey, was only 11 years old when he passed away last week after losing a battle with leukemia. Jeffrey loved to go camping and play with his toys like all 11-year-old boys. His favorites were remote cars and trains. He was a kind and considerate boy and very close to his cousins. His family will miss him terribly. And our condolences to Loida, Jeffrey's parents, and their entire family. And finally, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Guadalupe Leal. Guadalupe Leal was born in San Julián Jalisco, Mexico, in 1933. She was the youngest of eight children. She was only, when she was seven years old, her father passed away and her mother moved the family to Leon, Juana Wato, Mexico, where my grandfather came from 100 years ago. At the age of 23, Lupa came to Los Angeles to visit her brother for a vacation, and the vacation turned into a lifetime in Los Angeles. She met her husband Johnny there. They fell in love in April of 1957 and were married in July. Lupa and Johnny had six children. Lupa was a dedicated and loving mother. Once her children had grown, Lupa took a job outside the home working as a seamstress for almost 20 years. Throughout her life, Lupa loved music and dancing and collected... And so, I'm gonna remember him with great fondness and mourn his loss.
Thank you, Mr. Vieragosa.
Also, two more.
Please.
I'd like to adjourn in memory of Jeffrey James Legospi and express our deepest sympathies to a member of our city family, Loida Garganta. Loida Garganta works here at City Hall in Creative Services. Her nephew, Jeffrey, was only 11-years-old when he passed away last week after losing a battle with leukemia. Jeffrey loved to go camping and play with his toys like all 11-year-old boys. His favorites were remote cars and trains. He was a kind and considerate boy and very close to his cousins. His family will miss him terribly. And our condolences to Loida, Jeffrey's parents, and their entire family. And finally, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Guadalupe Leal. Guadalupe Leal was born in San Julián, Jalisco, Mexico, in 1933. She was the youngest of eight children. She was only, when she was seven-years-old, her father passed away and her mother moved the family to Leon, Juana, Wato, Mexico, where my grandfather came from 100 years ago. At the age of 23, Lupa came to Los Angeles to visit her brother for a vacation, and the vacation turned into a lifetime in Los Angeles. She met her husband Johnny there. They fell in love in April of 1957 and were married in July. Lupa and Johnny had six children. Lupa was a dedicated and loving mother. Once her children had grown, Lupa took a job outside the home working as a seamstress for almost 20 years. Throughout her life, Lupa loved music and dancing and collected dolls, and she led a rich life surrounded by family. She had six children, 12 grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. Her daughter Dolores was working with me as a secretary, a wonderful young woman. And I encouraged her to go on to college, and she did, and then law school. And now, she's a successful civil rights lawyer here in Los Angeles. And I know on her behalf, on behalf of her husband, Tomas, and her entire family, we will sorely miss Lupa.
Thank you, Ms. Vieragosa. Mr. Wyss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that you join me in adjourning in memory of Nancy Leventhal. Nancy was the daughter of Mel Leventhal, who serves as District Five's appointee to the Bicycle Advisory Committee. She died of breast cancer on February 27. She was born and raised in Los Angeles, graduated from Hamilton High, attended UC Berkeley, and then Bolt Hall. She became a lawyer, practiced for several years, and her life was ended tragically and tragically early by breast cancer. She is survived by her parents, Charlene and Mel Leventhal, her sister Joan, her brother-in-law Steve Goldblatt, her niece Sarah, her brother Robert, sister-in-law Lisa, nephews Karen and Andrew, sister Kathy, brother-in-law Sean, and nieces Dara and Paige.
Thank you, Mr. Wyss. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Ron Emmler, who was an Echo Park resident and an institution, who was sick, passed away on Wednesday, March 3rd. Actually, Dave Zahnizer, who lives in Echo Park as well, first told me about Ron being sick, but he's somebody who I came to know over the years for his incredible activism in Echo Park. He was a realtor. In the words of some of the residents that wrote tributes to him on our local listserv, he was one of the most ethical realtors that Issa K. Mexen, who often comes here, had ever met. She had actually just been with him with Katrina Lexi, somebody else known in these chambers quite well. And he was cognizant to the very end, but just an amazing person whose life touched so many institutions of Echo Park, from the Echo Park Improvement Association, which he founded, to the Echo Park Security Association, which he also founded, to the Echo Park Historical Society, which he nudged four other people into founding. He used to pay out of pocket to help literally anybody. He never complained, did everything with a smile. He came to my office hours a couple different times when we worked together on a project to clean up Echo Park Avenue and to keep on top of graffiti and a lot of the trash that was there. He was as valuable an asset to Echo Park as Echo Park ever had, in the words of one of the local residents. He shared his experiences and photographs of Thailand. He traveled throughout the world, was a practicing Buddhist at the Thai temple in Miss Grohl's district. He worked at North High School in Torrance, and a friend said that he contributed to the lives of truant students who wanted to quit school and how he would never give up on any youths, but he was determined that they finished school. He touched my life, he touched so many people's lives in Echo Park, and he will be dearly, dearly missed.
You said some beautiful things about someone who's extremely special to a community, contributed greatly, as Ron Emmler did. So, please let me say...
Thank you, Tom. I have Mr. Labange to that. I also ask colleagues that we adjourn in memory of Daniel Edward Williamson, who passed away on Saturday, February 26, 2005, a senior housing inspector and for 15 years, somebody who gave excellent service to the residents of Los Angeles. He started his career with the city as a building inspector, later appointed as a management assistant in the Housing Department in 1993, where he spent a majority of his career. He was promoted to rehabilitation construction specialist, project coordinator, and ultimately, senior housing inspector. He worked in the urgent repair program, providing some of the most needed repairs to folks who are living in life-threatening conditions. And he was a case manager enforcing our housing code on the worst properties in the city. Dan provided far more than just city services. Each year, he played the role of Santa Claus at the Housing Department's holiday celebration, and he brought joy to the children of L.A. H.D. staff. He was respected and loved by all who had the honor of meeting with him and working with him. He will be sorely, sorely missed. And he is survived by his wife, Marjorie, his six children, Julie Vaughn, Jim Williamson, Jeffrey, Jerome, Jack, John, and Jared, three stepchildren, and 19 grandchildren, one nephew, and two nieces. May he rest in peace. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll? Thank you all. Have a great weekend. This meeting is adjourned.